Open School Committee meeting of the regular meeting of Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021, 6:30 PM is the actual time. All members are in attendance except Mrs. Gannett, who we will hope will join us shortly. Going to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Northborough School Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the district website at the URL posted in the agenda. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so in the following manner. Live streaming, educational channel Verizon Channel 29, Charter Channel 194. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Alright, that said, we will go to right into the agenda, Agenda Item A, Audience Sharing. There will be two opportunities for audience sharing this evening, one at the beginning and one at the end of the meeting. If you would like to share, see we have nine attendees, please raise your virtual hand and we can promote you so you can. Anyone? Alright, I don't see any hands at this time. You see Kelly has joined us as well, welcome Kelly. We will move to Item B, which is new business, starting with a legislative update from Mr. Martino.
Thank you. Just a brief update on the state budget. The Governor Baker did release his House One budget on January 27th. And that has provided us, provided us a window into what we can anticipate for Chapter 70 and state aid. So we are on target as projected. Obviously, the budget process is lengthy and this is the first indication that we can expect slight increases in Chapter 70 funding. And also, we are looking forward to looking at whether or not the Student Opportunity Act will be funded. And specifically, circuit breaker reimbursement for out-of-district transportation. So again, some initial news are positive signs in terms of the governor's budget and it's a lengthy process. And as you know, the FY21 budget was voted in January of FY22. So we're hoping that it is more of a normal trajectory in terms of approving the state budget. So more information will be shared as budget drafts are released at the state level.
Thank you. Is that all legislative update?
That is, that is all for this evening, thanks.
That would bring us to the COVID-19 update.
Sure, so we, as, as the committee knows, we've been pursuing screening of faculty, staff and students since actually the start of the school year. And Mary Ellen Duggan and her team have done an excellent job in launching screening for faculty and staff. And her team will be, begin screening students in the near future. And I'll have Mary Ellen provide just a brief update on screening and what families can expect.
Sure. Hi, everybody. So this week, we are starting with our pooled screening for staff. It's being rolled out today was the, the emails went out and we are good to go for Friday. And our hope is to, by March 5th, I think is our timeline to have the students 100% in. So we'll know better after this, after Friday, how things go, how fast we can get the students on board. But we're hoping to do at least some next week before vacation. And then as we get back, we'll add more schools in. So that's the plan right now. I don't know if we went over pooled screening before, or if you need me to go into that in detail, I would be happy to do that.
Can I make a quick recap?
A quick recap, sure.
Yeah, just a summary, thank you.
Sure, so pooled screening is, we are using a company that pools at the lab, which means we send in individual samples in a bag. The 16 samples will be in one bag and that's considered a pool. Those samples are tested together as one. If there is a positive in that pool, then those individual samples can be retested individually so that we don't need to call people back in. If there's a positive pool, they can do it from that original sample that we sent in. The, there's a cost savings with pooled sampling because we're not doing individual tests on everybody. And that's it. So rather than individual PCR, it's a pooled PCR test. They're still all PCR tests. If there's a positive in the pool, they'll be tested individually so we can figure out which one in the pool was positive.
Thank you. I do see a couple of questions. I'll take those at this time. Erin, please go ahead.
Thanks. Do you know how many students have signed up to do the testing? Do we have good numbers yet, or?
There was about 1,300 the last time I checked, but that was earlier in the week because I've been rolling out for the staff. So I haven't gone back to that forum to check.
That's K to 12?
That is K to 12.
Well, is there a deadline to sign up for testing, or will you allow people to just keep signing up?
The people can keep signing up. So what we'll do for staff, we did have a deadline to fill out all the data, all the demographics for us and through a Google form. And they had a deadline to participate this week, but then the forum is still open so that they can start participating next week. So we just have to upload the information into the, into the portal.
Okay.
So I want to add that many of the districts that have started testing students, they saw a, about a 50% signup from students, from the initial signup. But then as the testing drew closer, they had increased participation. And then actually the second and third weeks into their testing, they really saw another wave of increased participation, but.
That's what I'm hoping, is people talk and people say how easy it is and manageable, that more people would still be allowed to, to sign up and that there's not a hard deadline. That's great.
I think for the first week, there'd be a hard deadline while we got things organized. And then we'll see how it goes and how open we can. Because with our other screenings that we've done for staff, we've added people, you know, that day when they showed up, we'd add them in. We're not going to do that on Friday while we're starting off this new platform, but in the future, we probably could, so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks Erin. Kelly, over to you.
Hi, thank you. Just to confirm or clarify, this is for all students, including students that are enrolled in the SARP program? Or is it just for hybrid in-person kids? I've had a lot of questions about that, so.
All students. There's no delineation between either.
Perfect, thank you.
Erin, I think your hand's left from before. We'll take Lauren, please.
Thank you. Mary Ellen, I think, you know, a lot of people probably have in their head those early tests, you know, the swab basically hitting the brain. Can you just sort of clarify whether that is the test that people would be signing up for?
Oh, sure. Definitely is not. It is an anteriorary swab, which means if you think about the tip of a Q-tip, that's how far it goes in your nose, just in the inside of your nose and you swirl it right around there. That's, when we do it with the kids, we tell them it's no worse than picking your nose.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions myself, Mary Ellen. Is it this similar to what we did when you provided an opportunity for school committee to see how you did with staff, just part of the holidays? Is it?
Exactly. That, that's the same test that will be done. It'll be done at home and it's a take-home test. So it's collected at home and brought into the school. So the reason we went with this is for, so we wouldn't take time off of learning, taking the kids out of the classroom to screen them. As you said, you know, it would take some time and the nurse power it would take to do, to swab all those people.
And another quick question, then we'll, we'll go to Joan. The results, I, I know staff have to sign up for like an access to a portal to see the results, I believe, right? Do they get an email about it? How will that be handled with students and families?
So it would go to a parent email? It would be the same.
Alright, thank you. Go ahead, Joan, please.
Hi, thank you Keith. Mary Ellen, what is the turnaround time for the first test? Let's say if that pool of testing is negative. What is, is it 48 hours that they, they get the results? And then if there is a positive, is, what is the time then, since that has to be retested individually?
So all of the results will come at the same time and it's between 36 and 48 hours. So they'll, well, if there is a positive pool, we'll get all the results once that positive pool has been individually tested.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mary Ellen, could I just ask you to share a little bit about the faculty and staff screening that we've been launched, that we've launched in November? Just a couple, some of the results we're seeing on a weekly basis over the past couple of weeks. I think that would be important information for the community to just hear about.
Oh, sure. So since we've started, implemented our screening program for staff, I just need to get, just to clarify some things. So there's screening and that's when you provide a test for asymptomatic people. And there's testing, which is more of a diagnostic, if someone's symptomatic or if they're quarantined for any reason. We have been doing both for our staff and I think that's part of being a complete screening and testing program and it's getting people back into school quicker. So if we talk about screening, we've screened a little over 6,000, about 6,100 staff have taken place. We've done 6,100 tests. And of those, we've had 10 asymptomatic staff members who have shown up in that screening. We have had 16 symptomatic people or quarantined people. So those people, we kind of expected, we went outside, they didn't come into the school for screening. We went to the car and the nurses went out to the car and screened them outside or tested them outside. So that is what we've been doing. So we've had 10 out of 6,000 since we started in November. We've done students also. We've done the high school students twice, and I think I reported on that. And we had one asymptomatic person through that test, that screening process. And then we have done some elementary students. We offered it to Proctor Elementary. We offered it to all students. We had about 83 take part in that. And we had some other students join in on that screening day from the high school that needed to be screened as a quarantined, as close contacts. And we've done it at other elementary schools too. So of the quarantined people, elementary school students that we've screened, we've had zero positives.
And I also just, we know that we have 86%, approximately 86% participation of faculty and staff each week. So it's, it's a large percentage of our employees who are participating. And it's really allowed us to see what's happening in terms of the prevalence of the virus within our, with our employees. And really has helped us make, again, data evidence-based decisions each week.
I think Erin, that goes back to your question about the students' participation. We did see a steady increase in staff and even this week with the new rollout, even more staff have signed up than have been participating.
Erin, do you have a follow-up or is that from before?
I do have one quick question, if that's okay.
Yeah, please.
Probably be for ROTA. Have we made any special outreach to families who maybe wouldn't understand the explanation of the testing or English isn't a first language? I know a lot of our communication goes out translated, but has there been any special consideration to reaching out to some of those families?
Yes, that's exactly what we're working on now.
Okay, great.
Yes. We'll make sure that every family knows what, what we're doing, yes.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about screening? Okay, let's go ahead and transition to the path forward on the COVID-19 update.
Sure, so I'll provide an update on the district's planning for increased in-person learning. Part of the work that we've been doing is really setting up testing and screening. So that has been one of the mitigation layers that we've wanted to add before considering increasing in-person learning. We have communicated to elementary families our timeline and plan. We've been working with our medical advisory team on a weekly basis, talking about the most current research and data and really spending our time as a leadership team, making plans for increased per, increased in-person learning beginning March 22nd. So there are just a tremendous amount of logistics to make it happen. From transportation to food services to shifting and moving furniture. Keith Lavoy, Director of Operations, and his team have been doing an amazing job preparing that work. And also, we continue to meet with our medical advisory team on a weekly basis because we don't know what March 22nd will bring in terms of the prevalence of the virus, the different strains. But it is our responsibility as a district to prepare for and plan forward and be prepared to shift if the conditions allow. So that is the work that we've been doing. Last evening, we did host a webinar with our medical advisory panel. And Mary Ellen and her team did an amazing job in just providing families with information. And we are asking families at the elementary level currently to make a decision between four days of in-person learning or standalone remote program. And I know for many families, it's not an easy decision. But it's one, it's a direction we feel as a district, we really need to, to move forward with, again, if the conditions allow. So just a couple of informational dates. So a forum did go out to families on Tuesday, yesterday, for families to make a selection. That forum is due Sunday, February 7th. And that really is a key data set for us to think about what types of shifts in staffing or planning for student placement will take place. So that's, that's a key date. The webinar has been posted and is available. An email did go out to families today. And I also just want to reiterate that we're planning forward and we're going to continue to meet weekly with the medical advisory team and make decisions each week around, is the timing still right? And I'm not sure if Mary Ellen or Keith or any of the principals have any information to add.
I think it's important to know that, as you remember, when we started the year off, you know, everybody was looking for a hard, fast number. What's our cutoff number? What would the number be? And there really is no number. As Mr. Martino said, we will look at all of the data, the in-school and the town data and the state data when the medical advisory team meets each week and base our decisions on those numbers.
I'll just add also, right now, our focus is kindergarten through grade five. After February break, we'll start having conversations in earnest about grades six through eight. I know Michelle Carr has already started some conversations, but they're very preliminary. And again, those, that work will be discussed embedded after February break.
And I'll just add that the things that Greg said were emailed, the webinar recording and the forum are also available on the district homepage on the website under latest news. So if, if anyone, that may be easier than searching your inbox. That's another place to find it.
I do see a few questions about the path forward. I'll go ahead and take those. Erin, please go ahead. You have the floor.
Thanks. I listened to the webinar last night. It was great. I love listening to the medical advisory team speak. One point that came up, and maybe this is a question for Greg or Stephanie, that's caused some conversation is a comment that was made about if a student changes into the four-day program, they potentially may not go to their neighborhood school, which makes sense. I'm assuming that's only going to affect SARP kids who are trying to get back in person. And you did say that there would be a phone call made to the family to let them know that they're not going to be in their neighborhood school. At that time, would you allow them to say, okay, we'll stay with SARP? Or would they still have to move forward?
Sure, I can take that. So you're exactly right, Erin. It would be in North Row, obviously, for students who are in SARP that wanted to come back into the four-day in-person. If the classes were already full in their neighborhood school, we would contact the family and give them the option of staying in SARP.
Okay.
Or we would tell them where they would be moving. But we would contact them before we'd make the move and they would have the option to stay in SARP.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Lauren, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Would the path forward, so that proposed, you know, end of March date, if conditions allow, to the four-day-a-week schooling, would that be contingent upon teachers being vaccinated?
So the, so this great question, so it is not contingent upon teachers being vaccinated. But as we did develop this timeline, we did take into account the window that we were given in terms of when teachers would be vaccinated. But again, the two are, are separate at this point in time.
Thank you. I, I realize it's a separate issue right now, but I, I'm going to ask a question about that. Do you by any chance have any information either from our town Department of Public Health or the state about when those tests would be available for teachers?
So Mary Ellen can.
So right now, just Monday, phase two began and it began with the 75 and over. And then it'll be, that's 2A, 2B is 65 and over and 2 comorbidities. And then 2C is K to 12 staff. So many of you know that the town website has a notification system that you could fill out a form and when you could tell them what your occupation was and what phase you thought you fell into by the criteria. And when vaccine becomes available for that phase or that part of the phase, you will be notified. So that's what happened with the school nurses. We, we put our, we filled out the form and the Board of Health let us know that there was vaccine available at Harrington Hospital and we all went there to get vaccinated. So that's how that form works. If vaccine becomes available and you're part of that phase that's, that can get the vaccine, you will be notified. So we're hoping, the, the town is setting up a site at the senior center. They're starting this week for the first time. They're vaccinating their first 75 and over group of residents this Friday. So we're hoping that they get increased vaccines so we can get through this quicker. And it's all about, you know, the logistics and the state guidelines that we have to follow.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. I do have one more question and that is the timeline for the path forward. So, you know, according to emails, I guess, our committee has gotten probably since July. I feel like, you know, a lot of parents have been asking for more in-person learning. And it's great that we have at least the planning process ready to go if conditions allow towards the end of March. I'm curious if there have been any pushback from families who just need more time to decide, like another week? Because it was a pretty quick turnaround time for K to five families.
So we have received a few emails around, it's a difficult decision for some families and they wish they had more time. But the majority of families have, have actually made a decision at this point in time. I think the last I looked, we had over, I think it was a little under 900 families complete the form. We have, that's a little over half of our elementary population across our two communities. You know, and I think the challenge is for us to be, to be prepared. We need this information. And if families are having a difficult time making a decision, they can always reach out to the building principal, to, to me, to Mary Ellen, and we'd be happy to answer questions. We know it's a difficult decision and we're asking families to make a decision about what might be in March. But I can assure families that the medical advisory team and the district will be using the most current data to make a decision at that point in time to decide either to delay or postpone based on the most current data we have at that time. So a long answer to your question, I think most families are ready to make a selection. And we also use the, the survey, the remote learning survey data that we received in December. And it was about a 60, 60% of our families wanted increased in-person learning.
Thank you.
Kelly, I just have one quick follow-up on vaccines before we go to yours, okay? So thinking this through, Mary Ellen, the town, so we have a lot of teachers, I'm sure, I don't know what the number is, who are town residents. But what about teachers who reside in other towns? Are we expecting that they go through channels in their respective towns and cities? Or are we looking at other options to have a coordinated effort for the district? I know that the supply chain and vaccines are scarce, but Grace, if there's a bit more, you can walk up to her on that.
Yes, definitely. The, all staff is included in the Northborough plan for vaccination, so.
Oh, they don't have to be residents?
No, all Northborough and, and actually even Southborough because we are really one. So all of the people that work in our district are included and we're able to fill out that notification form.
Okay, thank you. Kelly, go ahead, please.
Thanks. I just have one quick question about the surveys and are you, did we get one from each student in the families or did some families just fill out one? So is it 6% of families or 6% of respondents, like?
The, the data that we, the December survey, Kelly?
Yes.
The 60% of the respondents, you know, said that increased in-person learning was a preference.
And, and so we don't know if the respondents were, if it was each individual, okay. So it might have been 60, but there might have been like three from one family, for example.
Potentially each family, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, looks like back to Erin, please.
Sorry. Mary Ellen, this is for you. I've heard some rumors that teachers are being told or are under the assumption. Mary Ellen, this is for you. I've heard some rumors that teachers are being told or are under the assumption that it's going to take over nine weeks to vaccinate our teachers, because we only get, right now, Northborough's only getting a hundred doses. But that's not true, because they could technically go anywhere once they're eligible, correct? I think, I don't know if they think they have to get it through here. I mean, once they're eligible, they could go to Gillette, they could go to anywhere, any clinic that's offering them.
Right. Once their phase opens, once their phase opens, they could go anywhere in the state. They can go on the mass.gov site where it says, you know, choose my site, am I, can I get vaccinated? They can go there and see where there's openings. I hear that if you are eligible, if you wanna get in that Gillette, then you need to get on right at midnight, so we will give them those tips and tricks when it becomes our time.
I will say Gillette is very well organized, in and out. They do have a good system. So so the understanding that teachers are having that it's gonna take months to vaccinate them all is not correct, potentially.
Yeah, if we were just that, if they were just going to Northborough, yes, it would take months, but it will take months to vaccinate our seventy-five and over population at that rate. So there's different places, I mean, you know, there's all different places where vaccine is available now and it's just getting on the site when you are able to do it.
Right. So they're able to go anywhere once eligible.
Right. And if we're hoping that the town in Northborough will get approved for more vaccine, because the nurses are on standby to help vaccinate people too. Right now, it's the EMTs and the medics are planning, they're using, but if we move to two days and more vaccine, we could definitely move more people through there, so.
Great. Thank you.
Mary Ellen, I think it's, like you just said, it's the, it's the supply, which is slowing down the process more than our ability to vaccinate individuals. So we're hoping the supply increases, which then would allow us to obviously vaccinate more of our employees. All right. I don't see any other questions at the moment on the path forward. So that would bring us to approval of grants and donations. So in your packet is a donation, an amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars from Capio Bianco Law, and it's for a Northborough Free Lunch Program, and specifically for students who have meal balances that need to be paid. So that was a very generous donation. Does require a vote for approval. I would entertain a motion, please. Mrs. Frank?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion that we approve the donation in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars from Capio Bianco Law to the Northborough Free Lunch Program and to give them our thanks with this generous donation.
Kelly, gonna second?
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
I just think it's really generous and just wanted to say thank you to Capo Bianco Law.
Yes, I was gonna say the same thing. Again, seeing no further comments, motion is second to approve a donation, the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars from Capo Bianco Law to the Northborough Free Lunch Program. Roll call vote, please. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gant?
Yes.
Mrs. Tagliaferry?
Yes.
Michael Kipelbel, yes, a motion passes unanimously, and again, we accept this donation with great appreciation. That would bring us to item C, old business, of which there is none at this time. Down to item, item D, superintendent's report to the committee, starting with principals' reports. I hand it to Mr. Martino to mediate from there. Yes, so thank you. So I will have Jennifer Wright begin with the principal reports this evening.
Thank you. So it's been a busy month at Lincoln Street School. We have lots of great things going on. Last week, we kicked off our fifth annual Super Bowl to benefit the Northborough Food Pantry. So thank you to Trish Rollins, our physical education teacher, for taking the lead on that. We're looking forward to seeing how that ends and who will be crowned our Super Bowl winner. Last week, the students across the four elementary schools participated in a presentation through the PTO with Jay Mankita of Playful Engineers. They had a lot of fun learning about chain reactions and using, chain reactions using household items. It was pretty cute to see. We had about seventy-five attendees across the four schools. The presentation was supported in part by a grant from the Northborough Cultural Council as well. Tomorrow night, at Lincoln Street School, we will host PJ and Stories, a virtual event, as we gear up for our PTO Read-A-Thon. That's rescheduled from yesterday's snowstorm. And we're looking forward to that. We have a bunch of staff members who will be reading and sharing stories from Peter and Paul Reynolds as they will be joining our school or district, just our school, actually, I believe, for an author's visit on February eighth. Our Read-A-Thon will kick off on February eighth, and that will run through February, February twenty-sixth. Our fifth grade student council has been focusing on positivity this past month, and they will be launching a positivity slideshow for our school, and that will be shown on on the screen as you enter the Lincoln Street School. So they've been pretty excited about that. And another exciting event that's happened is our playground structures are now open. We have been safely able to reopen them with a schedule that we've put in place with hand sanitizing stations that are in place to use the playground and revisiting the social distancing with our students. And that's it for Lincoln.
Jennifer, who do you choose to present next?
I choose Amy.
Thank you, Jen. Zee has also been busy. We've been involved in a lot of the activities that Jennifer has mentioned. I have a principal advisory committee at Zee, and we meet once a month, and our focus this year has really been to talk about, you know, each month, we plan forward, you know, what would we do in a normal year? And how do we recreate that experience for both hybrid students and SARP students? So our past meeting, we spent a lot of time talking about different fundraisers that PTO is involved in, as well as our school. So we are launching a Carnation Drive. Typically, we use that each year to raise funds for our climbing program with Reagan DeSimone. This year, we're gonna shift our focus and concentrate on our fifth graders as they graduate, and we want them to engage in as many activities as they can as a graduating class. And as you can imagine, fundraising is difficult, so this was a nice shift for Reagan to allow us to shift this fundraiser to do that. PTO has also been involved in Muya Burgers as a fundraiser. Our enrichment coordinator, Jessica Miller, has been very busy coordinating with teachers for virtual field trips this year. On the books right now is a Kristy McAuliffe virtual field trip for our fifth graders, as well as a Boston Tea Party for our third graders, and there are other enrichment activities being planned for our other grade levels. We also wanted to really highlight our fifth graders as we kind of close out this year. And we're going to be engaging those fifth graders in video opportunities or live opportunities to do announcements. We're also going to spotlight the students and have them do Read Alouds, a book that might mean something to them, or maybe express their personality, so that they could be recognized in the hallways by other students. And as well, Zee will be engaging with Peter Reynolds on March first. And then following that, we'll also have a Read-A-Thon. Mary Coakley, would you like to take it over for Peaslee? I think you're on mute.
Mary, you're on mute?
You're on mute, Mary.
Sorry about that. So at Peaslee, teachers and students are working hard managing both the in-school and at-home learning. They're doing a fantastic job making it all work. It takes a lot of stamina, and they are still moving ahead strongly. We continue to review our practices to make smart choices about activities that we're planning. Teachers are diligent about keeping students' needs at the forefront. They're identifying strategies and resources to support students in the best way that they can. Teachers continue to partner with parents to meet the needs of students, constantly checking in to make sure things are going well. Last week, we too opened up our play structure. The jubilation amongst students in the cohort B was palpable. Weather permitting, cohort A will also have that chance to use the structure soon. Additionally, we are planning to offer morning recess opportunities beginning in March. Both opportunities will follow the COVID-nineteen guidelines. We look forward to our next all-school meeting. It will be our third all-school meeting. This has been a great way of pulling our entire community together. The meetings include our hybrid students and our SARP classrooms. This month, we will spotlight students who have been agents of change. And so connecting to the play structure, earlier in the year, I had two third graders approach me with a persuasive letter asking to utilize the playground in some way. And so as we were able to move toward that, these two girls have helped me in the planning and the rollout of how we will actually make that work, following the guidelines. So they've been instrumental in that. So, so I guess, supporting that theme, we wanna make sure that we're also giving other students those opportunities to be agents of, of, of change. I'd like to take the time just to thank our, our Peaslee PTO for their incredible support, especially this year. They work tirelessly in their fundraising efforts, including their work behind the scenes, planning ways to enhance our students and teachers' positive school experience. So thank you very much to them. They have brought us several enrichment programs, including Animal Adventures, the Discovery Museum, the Northeastern Center for STEM Education with an Intro to Engineering class, Noel Lampert, athlete and motivational speaker. We will be having Josh Funk, an author, visit. They've also continued to work with teachers to select even more of these, these workshops. They have, just now, we're getting started with an after-school opportunity where we've brought in Sue Studio, or Sewing Studio, STEM Beginnings, and Tower Hill with a planting theme, including terrariums, all hands-on experiences. We are starting small, and the groupings are tiny, but we are really optimistic that this will catch on and that we'll be able to do more of this this year. Also, one thing, I know Alana may speak to this a little bit, but we have tried to meet together to find really, I guess, engaging ways to celebrate our fifth graders. So as a Northborough community, we're working on that project together. Principals, parent volunteers, because we have kids who are in both the hybrid classes and the SARP classes. And so in order to bring all of our fifth graders together, we're collaborating on that experience. So thank you. Lots going on at Peaslee. And Alana, I'll hand it over to you.
Thanks, Mary. So same for Proctor, some overlap with the other schools and what the principals have shared. I think the strength of our school communities are that we do partner together, and we strive to keep the experiences for our students alive and vibrant, particularly during these challenging circumstances. I think we're all finding ways to put our heads together and think creatively about how can we keep our students engaged and make the learning joyful, and the after-school, before-school experiences joyful as well. So a few of those experiences have been already highlighted by the principals that we've collaborated on. We had a visit with Peter and Paul Reynolds back in January, and it was just, you know, very well attended. They are outstanding. Their message is so positive. And our students left that visit inspired to create and share their own stories, their own pieces of artwork. We've received several samples from the students that get sent in to us. So that's always nice to see how an author or somebody connects so well with the students, and then to see them have such great output afterwards. We had, today, we celebrated, it was World Read Allowed Day, so I had the pleasure of visiting classrooms, both hybrid and SARP, and reading to students. And we focused on primarily the theme of windows and mirrors and reading texts that expose students, you know, to different cultures, different ethnicities, different viewpoints. And we had some great discussions afterwards, after reading the book. So I have some, a few more classrooms to visit tomorrow, but it was certainly selfishly a treat for me to be able to go in and read and be with the students in that capacity. Next week, we are going to try our hand at a school-wide bingo. This is SARP and hybrid, so next Thursday, we'll do, part of it, we'll do the first cohort, and then Friday, we'll do the second cohort. So we are gonna have it through Zoom, and we have students from joining from both programs. So very exciting. We've been getting a lot of bingo cards ready this week in the office, and we'll make sure that all students have them, either a hard copy electronically. So this will be a great community event to bring us all together and just have a little bit of fun before we head out on the break for February. Our Nutrition Sixty-Eight program continues to serve as students across all of our schools. And I just wanna, again, highlight their partnership. They are always there. They are always asking about what can they do for students. They came on Monday before the storm. They came early. They pack, they deliver. And I just, you know, cannot say enough in how grateful we are for their help and support of our students and families in need. So we hope to continue to grow that and help families that might have a permanent or just a temporary need in that area of assistance. And we also are looking forward to some events coming up. We have meteorologist Sarah Proboleski visiting to talk about weather. She was supposed to come on Monday, but she got called in for storm duty. And so that was a little exciting that we, you know, we lost her to that, but I'm sure she'll have some great stories and information to share with us. And we're also looking forward in March, looking ahead to a scholastic book fair, a virtual book fair, as well as a theme across the schools in engaging in literacy activities. The librarians are working on a theme, I believe, of windows and mirrors as well. So we'll have some exciting news and information to share from that. And Michelle?
Well, I, for one thing, I definitely think our students would be excited to use your playground structures. They are looking for things to do and bring them outside, so we'll have to keep that in mind. We did start our clubs and activities at Melican. We sort of did a slow roll into them, probably three weeks ago. A club would start sort of here and there. We did publish on the website and send an email to families with about sixteen clubs to start and activities. Some of them are in the morning before school, some of them are actually during the school day, and some of them are after school. And some of them are, what teachers are doing is they're providing an in-person experience and then a separate virtual one. Some of them are doing them together. So we are looking for opportunities to connect our students to one another in ways outside of the classroom and that are non-academic, as well as to connect them with adults. So you know, some of our classic clubs that we have every year, Art Club, Kindness Club, Minecraft Club, those are all on the list, along with some, some other ones, and Stage Band and Jazz Band will be starting up. We are excited about this. It is making things start to feel a little bit more typical for the kids, and they're getting excited about it. So we are hopeful that as the weather warms up, and we're able to do some work outside with the kids in this way, we can maybe consider having our interscholastic track. We'll see how that goes, maybe baseball and softball. So things are feeling, we can sort of see the light coming, and I think the kids are getting excited about it. So that's great. Our phys ed teachers have had to be pretty creative this year in terms of units that they are, are teaching, and Jen Checkman and Andy Wilson have created several different units, given the current restrictions, and currently students are involved in a circus unit. So there are stations, and among other things, kids are learning to spin plates and walk on stilts and ride unicycles. And I thought I was gonna try the unicycle, but I got up a little bit, it wasn't good. So it's very hard. But it's kinda neat, because these are new things that we've never offered before, and I think it's really wonderful that people are willing to sort of think outside of the box and be creative to keep the kids engaged and excited. We were also able to purchase snowshoes, so we are excited about using the snowshoes with the kids in phys ed. We've got a nice big field out there, so so that is coming as well. I mentioned earlier that we had school pictures, again, just a typical school activity, which just makes things feel a little which just makes things feel a little bit more normal. We have a bus driver appreciation planned for next week. We have a club called the Hometown Helpers. We've had two bus driver appreciations so far where kids have created just little things and treats and given them to the bus drivers just so they don't forget that we appreciate them. So we're doing that again next week. And something that's been really exciting for us is we've had several SARP students transition into our hybrid program over the last few weeks. So, and I've had other discussions with families who are, who want to have their kids come back into our hybrid program. So it's really nice to see those kids when they come back. Sometimes when I talk with families, I let them know that they may not have the same teachers and so we will get a schedule ready for them. Let them take a look at that before they make a commitment because we know it is a big shift. And in so far in all of those cases, even if students had to switch teaching teams, the families are agreed that that was the best thing for them. And our teachers have continued to be very flexible and accommodating as students have, you know, come and gone into the different programs. Even when students are away for several weeks, we've had several students that have traveled for different reasons and, and maybe been stuck someplace and been, been out of the building for, you know, a few weeks. We've been able to put them into SARP temporarily and then after their quarantine, get them back. So I have to thank the teachers for that. They have been extremely flexible in working with families. And finally, we continue to work to bring in more kids, three to four days each week. We have about, the program I have mentioned in the past, we were trying to keep it at around six to eight, but we have expanded it to twelve and we still have plenty of space for the six feet. So when there is a need for a student, based on data, including grades and things like that, but also anecdotal data from home and how things are going, we are trying to, to get kids in when that makes sense. And for some kids, it's just an extra half day. For some kids, it's, you know, two more full days. And we're trying to accommodate as much of that as we can because we know how important that is. And that's all for me.
All right. I guess we're back. That brings us to enrollments, right, Mr. Martino?
Yes, and through the chair, if it's the will of the committee to have the principals go do their homework for the evening, that would be, I think, greatly appreciated on, on their behalf.
Yes, we have been doing that recently. I do see one question. I just want to make sure it's not for a building leader, if that's okay. Lauren, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Keith. It's actually more just a comment. I just really wanted to thank all of our principals. I mean, I, I feel like there was a sense of normalcy when you were reporting. And I think that that shows all of your work as building leaders. It shows all of our teachers' work, trying to, to maintain some sense of normalcy for our students and also to see the silver linings, you know. Michelle, I thought that was really cool about the circus unit that the PE teachers are doing and, you know, just finding sort of new and creative ways to get students engaged. So I just really appreciated it and it felt sort of like a normal meeting. So thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you, everybody. It's nice to see you. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good, have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. Right, so in your packet is the enrollment report. So in, for the month of January, we had a decline of two students. And our difference or variance from the start of the, beginning of the year since August has been seventeen students. And with many conversations with surrounding superintendents, they saw drastic declines in their enrollment numbers from August to now. And although seventeen seems like a significant number, it is, is far less than what many of our area communities are experiencing. And this is important because our October one enrollment really dictates the amount of Chapter Seventy funding we received. So we did not see a decline in, in funding based on our declining enrollment. So that's good information, good news.
Is that mostly due to homeschooling, Greg, you think, or?
It's just a combination of homeschooling and families choosing private schools that are open more than two days a week. So also in your packet are the enrollment numbers for our standalone remote program. We continue to focus on recruiting educators to work in our standalone remote program. And Heather and her team and Stephanie and Alana Sierra, who is kind of leading the SARP program, have really done a great job interviewing and recruiting. But it's been a slow process, but that work is still continuing as we, as we move forward. So also in your packet is the FY twenty-one monthly general fund expenditure report. And I will have Becky Pellegrino summarize the report.
Good evening. So there are no significant variances in this month's report as compared to last month. As of January thirty-first, we had three hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars remaining on the bottom line, or one point three-six percent of the FY twenty-one budget. In comparison to last year, at this time, we had four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars remaining, or one point seven-one. So we are trending closely as to where we were for FY twenty. I will point out that we currently have one hundred and eighty thousand dollars encumbered for our food services program. And at this time, I do not anticipate requiring this entire amount. And I will provide an update on food service in my next presentation, but that's one area that we are looking, that we may be able to release some funds.
Mrs. Frank, please go ahead.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve until audited the Northborough Public School District FY twenty-twenty-one budget monthly general fund expenditure report as of January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Second, Erin Tagliavari.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none. The question is on the acceptance of the FY twenty-twenty-one budget monthly general fund expenditure report as of January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Mrs. Frank, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Miss Tagliavari?
Yes.
I went out of order there. Mrs.?
Yes.
And myself, Keep the Bell. Yes, motion passes unanimously and the expenditure report is accepted. Thank you. That brings us to COVID-19 unanticipated expenses. I to Mr. Martino or Mrs. Pellegrino?
Becky will continue with the financial.
I will share my screen. Can everyone see that?
That's loading. And this, for those, for those who've got the packet, also, unless it changes, also link.
There is a slight change since the packet. Can you see that now, Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Brinkley, thank you.
So this is actually the exciting part because this is where the change actually came in, where we were informed of some additional grant funds that have become available. So the, the first piece that you'll notice that is different from last month's report is that we are, have been informed that we will be receiving another round of Essar money. And they're referring to that as Essar II. So that amount is one hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. And those funds can be used through the end of fiscal year twenty-three. So that does give us an ability to, to really be planful about where we will concentrate our spending these, these funds. It's a little different from some of the other grants that we've received in that ten thousand dollars is specifically allocated for mental health services. And then the newest grant fund that we received that was not on your report is an FY twenty-one state coronavirus prevention fund. And this was an amount of money that was included with the House and the Senate version of the budget that was passed. The governor had initially vetoed that and then they did override his veto. So we are anticipating receiving fifty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. We'll receive that in two increments, one at the beginning of February. So we are expecting that at any time for half of that amount. And then the other half will be received at the end of April. And that does need to be expended during this fiscal year. So that is exciting news that we have seen a little bit more money come into the schools, especially as we are planning the path forward. In terms of the expenses that we've been talking about this year, you can see that we really are moving right along on this chart. We're more than halfway through our, our fiscal year. And so we are trending right along with where we thought we would be at the beginning of the year. We have one area where we may see some savings, and I think I've mentioned this previously, is in our teacher substitutes. The building-based subs have been able to give the school some relief. And so we may see some savings in that line item. But for the most part, these line items really are trending along with where we thought that they were going to be. Our preschool revolving account, once again, we are in the black by four thousand dollars for each town. So a total of eight thousand dollars. And just to look at where we stand in terms of our tuition versus our expenses, you can see that they are right in line with one another, where we've received forty-four percent of our tuition and we have about forty-three point four percent of our expenses that we have already expended during fiscal year twenty-one. And then lastly, on our food services program, so we are turning, I, I feel like we are turning the page. And, you know, Keith can certainly jump in at any point, but we have seen an uptick in our à la carte sales. We've seen an uptick also in our, in our sales on, or not our sales, but our pickups on Mondays. And so right now, we are trending with a deficit of seventeen thousand dollars. However, we are really breaking even each month and, and some months, we're actually seeing a positive balance. So we're moving right along and that is why I do not think that we will need the entire one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so Keith, I don't know if there's anything that you'd like to share about the food service program?
Yeah, sure, Becky. I, I do think that the Monday pickup program has gained momentum. Neighborhoods have really helped each other. We've been able to prepare and, and allow for pickup over fifteen hundred meals on average on those Mondays, which has really helped. And we have received many words of appreciation from the community about this program. We also have approximately ten parents and community members providing delivery services for families that are not able to come to Melican to make those pickups. So it is working well right now and I do encourage anyone that is interested, whether it be to participate in the delivery program or that are available to come pick up meals, to certainly reach out to me and I will make the proper connections. But it has gained momentum and it seems like we're in a pretty positive spot for that collectively.
Yeah, I will say that January was one of our highest months also in terms of our participation. Obviously, it's one of our longest months. However, we did see over fourteen thousand meals served during the month of January and that included that Monday pickup. So it's nice to see that the students are participating in the lunch program. And that concludes my pro, my presentation. And there are any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Mrs. Bailey Jones.
Thank you. Becky, when you were talking about, I think it was the state coronavirus prevention fund and you were mentioning that one of the ways to use the money is through mental health services. Has the district thought about ways that they could use that in the future?
So Lauren, that's actually with the Essar II money and that it, those are the funds that we have until fiscal year twenty-three. And we have not sat down collectively. We just actually found out that provision about a week ago. So we've, we've had some preliminary conversations. There is an SEL committee that has formed. And so we are looking at SEL throughout the district for our students. And so, you know, part of that work that comes out of that committee may also speak to that money.
I'll just add, Lauren, that ten thousand dollars is, although it's helpful, not a, not a tremendous amount of money. So to Becky's point, the social emotional learning committee is also looking at what we need. And I think that ten thousand dollars will help supplement the work we do. But definitely, definitely not the only amount we'll use for, for that work in our budget.
Great. Thank you for that clarification.
And one thing that I would also point out with the, with the Essar money, the second round, is that it really does seem to be more focused on assessment, whereas the first round was on getting students back into buildings and making sure that we had the technology that was needed and the PPE that was needed. This one is really now, okay, we're getting students back in. What do, you know, what have they missed? What can we do to help them now while we've been in the, either hybrid or in some instances throughout the state and fully remote?
Thank you. Mrs. Tagliavari, please go ahead.
Thanks, Becky. You definitely started to answer some of my question in that was what are the limitations in, in the spending of this money? What about the coronavirus prevention, that last one? Is there a limit?
We are waiting to get more guidance on that. It, we just, it broke over the weekend. I was actually moving my daughter into UMass and was texting Greg the information. And so we're waiting to get a little bit more information. For Northborough, what our, our hope is, is that, like I said, some of the work that needs to be done to bring students back in through the path forward, that we will be able to use these funds to purchase, you know, additional HEPA-filled air purifiers, desks, chairs, those sorts of things that are needed.
Great. Thank you.
And you, Mrs. Frank, please go ahead.
My question is for Becky. And Becky, you have answered, I think, in, in your last response that you answered my question. Because I was wondering what anticipated cost we'd be looking at as we do the path forward and we resume to, you know, in-person learning for four days. Is there going to be, I expected there would be an increase in the COVID expenses. And I was wondering if you're anticipating those, but I think in your last statement at the conclusion for Erin's, you, you hit upon some of those areas.
Yes, those are some of the, the material needs. Greg, I don't know if you want to speak to maybe some of the?
No, I think it's a great question and Keith can speak to some of the, the needs that we have. But I also just want to comment that some of these purchases that we're making for potential increase in person learning, also we're thinking potentially could be, will be needed as we reopen in the fall. So I, I think it's just important to keep in mind that the purchases for the upcoming March twenty-second date will definitely be needed in the fall as well. Keith, do you want to provide an overview?
That's exactly what I was going to say, Greg. That's absolutely right. So we are not just forecasting for March twenty-second. We are forecasting for September first and trying to make some good decisions. Becky did indicate the need for air purifiers. This was part of Kalash's report over the summer that if we do go to more in-person learning, that he would recommend HEPA filtration in each of the classrooms. That is something that we're going to be securing in the next couple of weeks. Actually, the order was placed today, as a matter of fact, to get that done. We're also looking at student desks because the cafeterias need to be converted from their typical furniture to desk furniture. A lot of those desks were taken from classrooms. And since now, we've got to bring those desks back into the classrooms, we will need more desks to offset that. We did have an inventory in Northborough, which was extremely helpful. We, we are going to be exhausting that, but we still have a need for some student desks as well as student chairs, mostly to create those cafeteria spaces. So right now, those are the high items on my list to, to get accomplished in the next couple of weeks. In addition to that, we are looking at our cleaning supply inventories and our burn rates for, for different things. But we are on target and we have a pretty decent supply in place. So I don't see that being an extraordinary cost. We might see some additional costs that occur, but we really won't know that until we know the number of students that will be coming back into the buildings.
Thank you. Looks like Mrs. Frank, are you all set? I just have a quick follow-up on, for, for Keith on the, like furnishings. It's just a thought went into my head while you were saying it. But I was wondering, do you go to the level of consideration that perhaps some of these things that might be needed short-term don't need to be the normal build quality for a desk we expect the last 20, 30 years? So is that part of the, I'm being picky, right? But I'm assuming there's a desk that costs, you know, 400 and one that costs 200. And is that something that you work through on the cost side and the benefit? And the kind of what projected longevity is of use?
Yeah, absolutely. We are looking at the materials of the desks themselves. We are looking at references of groups that have purchased those. We are looking not at the high-end models by any stretch of the imagination, but we don't want something that's going to fall apart in three weeks either. So we're trying to make some good, fiscally sound choices. I think we're, we're using state contracting, which is really helping the bottom line of that. And when we use state contracting, there's a bunch of benefits. So we get the cooperative nature of purchasing in that way. And we've made contact with many vendors so that we can really get the best price possible. So I'm really trying not to get that thing that's going to fall apart and being very thoughtful about it. And I do think we've got some high-quality items that we're going to be bringing in, into the schools.
Yeah, thank you. It's a fine line to walk, right? Because the, the big question is, is this something we are going to need after, you know, we're back to normal, put that quotes obviously, but that, that's the question, right?
Yeah, there's certainly a number of pieces of furniture that, you know, you do need a cycle of replacement. This is going to help that, but it's not going to, you know, retrofit an entire school with new desks. That's not, you know, what, where our needs are. But certainly those ones that have been problematic, and I'm sure every teacher has that desk that the leg won't stay in place, or the chair that has the footing that will always fall off. Those are the types of things we're going to be able to do with these replacements. So they will not be sitting in a closet somewhere. They will be put to good use.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I don't see any other questions on the unanticipated COVID expenses at the moment. Thank you very much for providing all that information.
So next in your packet is the Northborough Public Schools FY '22 through FY '28 Facilities Capital Plan, which was approved in November. And we continue to have conversations with John Kader and thinking about what potentially could be placed as warrant articles on the capital plan. And those conversations are still taking place. Also, in your packet is the FY '22 budget goals, which we will speak about in the FY '22 Recommended Budget Presentation, as well as the FY '22 Budget Calendar. And with that said, I will share my screen and provide a recommended budget presentation. All right. So first I'll begin just by talking about all the hard work of the leadership team, the principals and teachers in preparing this recommended budget. I also want to thank Becky Pellegrino and her finance department and her team for all the hard work getting to this point in the budget process. At the January School Committee meeting, I presented the FY '22 Recommended Budget. And at that time, I asked the committee to hold off on voting the budget, again, as there were a lot of unknown variables in terms of the town's economic landscape. We were still waiting for the governor's budget. So that time has allowed us to get better data and better numbers and sharpen our pencils and kind of think about what we hope to accomplish and what type of resources we need to accomplish those goals. So I know the school committee has heard this presentation on a number of fronts, most recently at this past Monday's February 1th Operational Budget Subcommittee Meeting. But for the audience, I will go through the presentation in its entirety. So what, what drives our work in terms of budgeting? We are a mission and vision-driven organization. Our mission is quite simple. It's to educate, inspire, and challenge all students. And our vision is a result of the work that came out of the reauthorized Vision 2026 District Strategic Plan, and really thinking about what we want our students to be when they leave our system. And we want them to be collaborators, critical and creative thinkers, communicators. We want them to be socially and civically engaged, growth-oriented, and healthy and balanced. So in terms of the budget process, so as the school committee is well aware, the budget process is exactly that. It's a lengthy process that begins in September. And I think this September, the school committee spent time looking at the new strategic plan and thinking about its budget priorities and budget goals. And the school committee, as you know, developed updated budget goals, which have been really important in terms of driving this work forward and helping the leadership team make decisions. Capital Planning Subcommittee Meeting in October, and I'll just highlight a couple of these items. And then proposed operating budgets prepared by principals. So a lot of the work that principals did with, with their faculty and staff were presented to the Central Office Leadership Team in November. Becky and her team and the Central Office Leadership Team took those numbers and created a initial first draft budget. And then December, presented the preliminary budget to the school committee. And then January, presenting the recommended budget this evening for a vote of the school committee. And then the next kind of milestone after this evening is the public hearing. And then lastly, the Northborough Town Meeting, where hopefully the budget passes and is voted by the taxpayers. So the next slide is really where we began the fiscal year '22 budget process, and that is where we, where we left off in fiscal year 2021. This table is a snapshot of the budget process last fiscal year from initial budget requests, always all the way through the town appropriated budget, which reflected a 1% increase over fiscal year '20. And I just want to point everyone's attention to the school committee voted budget, which was a 3.15% increase, was the intended budget that we hope to bring to the town meeting. But again, as a result of the pandemic, working in collaboration with the town, we did go back to our budgets and see if we could make further reductions, again, to accommodate for the financial challenge the pandemic brought forth. So again, I think it's important to think about where we began this FY '22 budget, and that was from an increase of a 1% in FY '21. So I spoke earlier about the school committee's work around updating its budget goals. So these goals are essential in terms of the work that we do as a leadership team and really making informed decisions around what we hope to accomplish through the budget process. And I'll just highlight a couple. So obviously recruiting, maintaining, and supporting high-quality staff. And I'll just point out to expand instructional leadership. So we have a lot of talented principals, teachers. And one of the goals we're trying to accomplish is really to bring coherence to teaching and learning and curriculum across our five schools and specifically across our four elementary schools. Meeting the needs of all learners with instructional classroom models that are research-based, reflect best practice, and support class sizes that allow for great teaching and learning. Other approved budget goals are expanding professional development for all teachers with the emphasis on structured sequential multi-sensory-based reading, social emotional health, history and social science framework, best practice in terms of use of technology and instructional practice, and then creating culturally responsive, inclusive environments. And I think anytime we can invest in our teachers' expertise and knowledge, it's a great investment for our district and pays dividends over, over many years. And lastly, maintaining the district's capital assets. So, you know, really looking at how we can create opportunities for safety and energy efficiencies, looking at the feasibility study of schools and learning spaces, and then school improvements, specifically at Peaslee School and Melican Middle School. And the last two approved budget goals focus on supporting instructional technology and then ensuring all students are provided with equity of opportunity. So as we looked, as we began the FY '22 budget process, we always consider what our variables are, what are the unknowns as we project out the budget. So contractual obligations, so last year, we were negotiating with custodians and negotiated a one-year contract. Typically, we would negotiate a longer-term contract, but again, we were in a pandemic. So we are back at the table with the custodians. That was, that is an unknown variable. Chapter 70 funding and new legislation. So Chapter 70 funding was a question around how much the district would receive, but also what amount would be funded of the Student Opportunity Act. And that is still something that we are learning, and we'll get more information as the state budget moves forward. Out-of-district special education funding is always a moving target. So the funding percentage can vary from year to year. We will not know this number until the summer, but the way we budget circuit breaker allows us to have a predictable number in our budget for FY '22. And then lastly, the unknown is, you know, what impact will COVID-19 have on the '21, '22 school year? And we are anticipating some expenses in the information Becky shared about S R two funds and some other funding that we, we're not anticipating really helps support any potential purchases that we might need, or also providing any interventions students might need as they return to full in-person learning in the fall. So in terms of the, the budget process, again, this table is a snapshot of the budget process from the preliminary budgets that district leaders and principals submitted to the finance team, all the way to what we are presenting this evening. So with all of the budget requests from building principals and the leadership team, the initial budget reflected an 8.92% increase. And again, a lot of the conversations that we have initially when creating the budget is, you know, if there were no fiscal constraints, what types of positions and materials would you, would you ask for? Obviously, we work closely with the town administrator and the town in terms of what type of percentage increase the town could afford. And we knew that the 8.92% was not in, in the range that was presented to us. So the leadership team and principals went back to their budgets, and as a result, were able to reduce it to represent a 4.40% increase. And then again, some of the numbers became more clear at the state and local level. And we were able to present a budget at last school committee meeting in January that reflects a 3.32%. Since that time, we've gained greater clarity in the data. And this evening, the budget that I'm recommending is a 2.47% increase over fiscal year '21. So some of the budget increases that we are seeing in this budget, the first is that we are, we've budgeted to fully implement tuition-free kindergarten as the school committee has been intimately aware that with its five-year plan, we've been on target with our plan, but the pandemic did slow it down quite a bit. And through conversations with the school committee, we did make a decision to make this a budget priority. And as a result, there's $200,000 in this FY '22 budget that again, will complete the implementation of the tuition-free kindergarten in our district. Custodial supplies and building maintenance is another item that is a budget increase. As a result of the pandemic in FY '21, we did significantly reduce our supplies and building maintenance line item. And this is a restoration of, of those supplies and materials. And lastly, instructional technology. So we deferred some instructional technology purchases, and we are restoring some of those purchases, which is a total of $51,046. So the budget increases we're seeing is a little, little over $330,000 for the FY '22 budget. So the fiscal year 2022 budget offsets. So one of the most significant offsets is using FY '21 circuit breaker reimbursements to offset the budget, which is the greatest budget offset we have, and it's a little over $1.3 million. We have retirements and leave of absences, which reflect a little over $106,000. And then we have S R and I D A grant funds offset. So some of the S R two funds and also Becky and her teams work around shifting money to our I D E A grants, created an offset of $125,000. And lastly, principals and our leadership team really looking at the line items. So we have a reduction of $65,608. So the total budget offsets for this FY '22 budget is a little over $1.6 million. So the FY '22 Recommended Budget reflects the Level Services budget with growth and targeted areas. The total budget is $25,799,678, which is a budget increase of $621,834, which is a 2.47% increase over FY '21. So this next slide is a comparison. So again, we did have to go back to the drawing board with our budget and amend the school committee voted budget. And this is just a comparison of what I am presenting this evening as a recommended budget compared to what the school committee hoped to bring to the town meeting before the pandemic. So if you look at the recommended budget increase compared to FY '21 school committee voted budget, this budget would have reflected a $298,454 increase or a 0.33% increase. So it's just a comparison. I know that every town department could do this comparison, but I think it's important to share this information and do this type of analysis. So budget summary. So the fiscal year '22 Recommended Budget implements tuition-free full-day kindergarten, which is, I think, a great accomplishment if this is voted at the town meeting. It increases instructional resources and professional learning. Some of the instructional resources are around the implementation of history and social science, and also mathematics, renewing some of the resources at the middle school level, and then some professional learning in terms of instructional practice, the teaching of literacy, and also implementing best practices around technology. Translation services is also an area where we're increasing our services. So Rhoda Webb and her team do an amazing job supporting our families. And part of that support is really making sure families have the information in a way they, it is, it can be accessible to them. So we're seeing an increase of translations. So this budget reflects that. And also Heather Richards does an amazing job, is making a recommendation around implementing absence management software for employees and substitute management. So currently, this work is completed through People Power. So subs are called. So currently, this work is completed through people power, so subs are called by our sub-callers. There's a lot of human interaction with this work, which is important. But Heather's experience and background and recommendation is to automate some of this. So we can use some of that people power and resources in, in other areas. So it implements a software across our three districts and in this budget. South, North Rose portion is forty percent of the total cost, which is ten thousand dollars. And lastly, this budget includes instructional capacity to support teaching and learning. So we're looking at instructional leadership in the areas of English Language Arts. As well as mathematics and social emotional learning. So really providing that level of district level support and leadership in bringing coherence and support to our principals and our educators. And this budget includes funding for that work. So continued budget conversations, so not all of the work we do or want to move forward has a budget number tied to it. Not everything costs additional money. I will share that our principals and leadership team is really looking at student-level supports for academic interventions. Thinking about some of the S R two money, but also thinking about the current resources we have. And making sure that we can provide the academic interventions for students who need the intervention or students who need acceleration, so both ends of the continuum. And lastly, based on the recommendation of the music study group, we are doing a study of what it would take to implement a strings program at our elementary schools, specifically at the fourth and fifth grade level. This budget currently does not have funding to bring this forward, but it is, it is something we are looking at and hoping to make it as a budget priority in fiscal year twenty-three. So this slide really is just a comparison of the actually, it's an overview, historical overview of the budget increases over the past several years. As you can see in fiscal year twenty-one, the appropriated budget was a one percent. And in comparison, the recommended budget this evening for the school committee is a two point four seven percent increase. Which again, is in alignment with the collaboration and the conversations that we've had with town administrator John Kader. And lastly, this is, this was our, our multi-year plan for implementing tuition-free kindergarten. What you can see is in FY twenty-one, what we had projected. And then the row below that is what actually took place as a result of the pandemic. So this put us behind our plan, behind our schedule. However, again, with a budget priority of implementing tuition-free kindergarten, if this budget is approved and voted by a town meeting, this would accomplish this long-term goal that the school committee has set and has worked toward over the past several years. So with that said, I will, I will conclude my presentation and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Frank, please.
I don't have any questions at this time, but I like to just have a high regard and a high recommendation of approval for this budget, and I'd also like to thank Greg and his administrative staff and all the teachers, Becky, all of the people in her department and all, again, administrative staff for putting together such a concise and a budget that is within the realms of what the town would allow us to grow to. But yet still take care of the educational needs of our students and of our teachers, especially during these difficult times that we are going through right now. So I would just like to thank everybody. Keith Lavoy, everybody that I can see here on the screen, Stephanie Rhoda Webb. This has not been an easy time, and I know you even started earlier back in October. Probably after one of our first meetings is beginning this thoughtful and concise budget and putting it together tonight. So I am ready to make a motion, Mr. Chair, if you would like me to do so.
Yes, please, we'll take some more comments and discussion, but that would be fine, Mrs. Frank.
Okay, I move that we approve the FY twenty-two operational budget for the Northbrook K D eight schools in the amount of twenty-five million seven hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which is an increase from FY twenty-one in the amount of six hundred and twenty-one dollars, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars, which is an increase of two point four seven percent.
Second, Kelly Gannett.
Thank you, we do have a motion and a second, we can continue discussion. Mrs. Gannett, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. The question about the process, why do we vote on it before the public hearing? I feel like I've asked this before and I, and I forget. What's the purpose of the public, the public hearing is next, next month, we basically read the budget into the record, correct? So what's the purpose of doing that after we already voted on it? Cause don't, doesn't the audience, doesn't a public hearing, don't they have like, community has like input, like they could talk and stuff about it?
Becky, do you want to talk about the public hearing?
So this actually gives us the opportunity to have a budget that is being presented to the community that's been approved by the school committee so that we can prepare the necessary materials that were required to post for that process, so having a finalized budget gives us the concrete numbers and can move us forward with that.
It's also, it's also part of Mass General Law and part of the budgeting process, so every community in, in the Commonwealth goes through a similar process. So it's, and I think hopefully along the journey, Kelly, there are a lot of opportunities for public comment, so we're hoping that we don't hear the final public comment at the, at the final public comment session.
Yeah, I agree, I just wanted to make sure that it was, it's not like something that we just made up, you know what I mean, like I want, like people to know also that it's, it's, it's the process and, okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Bailey Jones, please go ahead.
Thank you, I know we talked about this, our budget at length on Monday night. However, I am going to repeat a lot of my questions, just so that the community is aware of the conversations that we had. So first of all, just a couple of comments on my, on my side. I am very pleased that we have finally made free full-day kindergarten a budget priority and that it's reflected in this budget. I think it's going to make a lot of parents happy and it's, you know, maybe a silver lining of the pandemic that we were able to move this forward. Secondly, with the two point four seven percent increase, which compared to our original budget that we approved last January is really only like a, I think you said a point three three percent increase. You know, that, that's a pretty stark number, hearing that point three three percent increase. So I'm just wondering, from this proposed budget, are there any, you know, positions that teachers were asking for? Additional classroom teachers or resources that are, are very heavily needed that we were not able to accommodate in this budget?
Sure, so I'll point out two of the areas that I think we had a lot of conversations around. And that is, the first one is student support services and really thinking about adding a team chairperson. Currently, we have a team chairperson that supports pre-K through eight. So that was a request and I think a future goal of ours to add a second teaching team chairperson. The other position that we had a lot of conversation around is health education and really adding instructional capacity in terms of, of teaching health. And then also really thinking about instructional technology or some type of more support in that area, something that, that we had some conversations, so those are the three areas. And then there were other smaller items, materials and supplies and resources, but for the most part, those are the three areas that people were hoping to move forward, but did not make it into this particular budget.
Thank you. In this, in this proposed budget, were there any position cuts?
So there were no elimination of positions. We, we are looking at some of the retirements and as a way to rethink positions and rethink what we hope to accomplish. But there are no reductions to positions in this budget.
Thank you. I have two more questions, the first with one of the budget priorities was around supporting teaching and learning. Can you go into detail a little bit more about what that would look like with the instructional coaching model that you had briefly mentioned?
Sure, so I think when we, we've done a tremendous amount of work as a district, really looking at our finance and operations in terms of how we conduct business. So whether it's food services, finances, facilities, and we've increased capacity and have organized. You know, the most recent announcement of Keith Lavoy as Assistant Superintendent of Operations allows us also to look at Stephanie Reinhorn's role as Assistant Superintendent, currently, she's Assistant Superintendent of everything. So really, we're trying to focus roles and use everyone's expertise and passions. So Stephanie really leads all curriculum areas, pre-K through twelve, across all of our ten schools. Which, as you can imagine, is a significant endeavor. She does have a distributed leadership model where teachers have leadership opportunities. But we're really hoping to expand her team to include a K eight Director of Mathematics, pre-K through eight Director of Mathematics and pre-K through eight Director of English Language Arts. And also a Director of Social Emotional Learning, pre-K through twelve. And these positions will be shared with, the two Director of E L A and Math positions would be shared with Southburn. And the Director of Social Emotional Learning would be shared with Southburn in the region. And really, the idea is to build coherence in terms of these programs. And also provide principals with the support and also really concerted focus on those, those content areas.
Thank you for that overview, those positions mentioned, would they be housed at central office or would they be housed within the schools?
Most likely not at the central office, because we, we do not have any space. And we haven't, we haven't decided where, but most likely somewhere in, in, in our schools. But, you know, again, and Stephanie, I don't know if you want to speak to, you know, your intersection with these positions and what, and what some of our vision is in terms of the work of these roles.
Sure. You know, I think Greg has said a lot of the big picture, there's, there's still a lot of conversations to be had to define this work and how it all gets laid out, but the idea is that, as Greg said, right now, you know, I'm juggling all of these different areas and well, one's on the front burner, one's on the back burner, right, and so to have a team of people who are paying attention to the various areas, acting together as a team, a leadership team around teaching and learning, but then also working with principals, with teachers and creating coherence and alignment and a sort of constant push towards the work in our strategic plan, so that we can provide the support and that consistency across the schools vertically and horizontally in these areas. So it would allow us to still have our teacher leadership model, but have a better infrastructure to use that model, I think, more effectively to reach all the way to the classroom and to the students.
Thank you so much, Stephanie, I think I was hoping to hear that these positions would be in the classrooms and not at central office. And I did hear that reflected as, you know, these positions would be for teaching and learning, so it's, it's good to hear that they would be working directly with principals and teachers, thank you. I do have one more comment and then one final question, Chair, Mr. Chair, is that okay with you?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you, so I am definitely in support of increasing translation services, especially because we have over twenty-one languages spoken in our district. I think that's something that, you know, as the next couple of years goes on, we're going to need to look at more closely of, you know, how can we support Rhoda's department even more moving forward? So that's just something I wanted to comment on. And then finally, you know, during this budget process, I didn't hear too much about special education. So Greg, I was wondering if you could just sort of, you know, paint a picture about what we've done in the past for special education and whether it's reflected in this proposed budget.
So, so I just want to also point out that special education is, is not something that is an arm of the work we do, it is part and parcel of our conversations and, and thinking about curriculum and how to meet the needs of all learners. Over the past three or four years, and Mary, Marie Allen can add any details I miss. We've added a lot of social emotional support in our, in our classrooms and our schools. We've added school psychologists, behavioral specialists. We've also increased the capacity of our educators specialists in each of the schools. So we've made a significant investment over, over the years, we've added a team chairperson. And that, that work has really helped us improve our service delivery to students and meet the needs of students. But also, it's really part of the work that we're doing to really create synergy between all of our programs. It's not just special education and regular education. It's these directors of E L A and math and social emotional learning are intersecting with the work that Maria is doing. It's the professional development around, around teaching of reading that, that Maria is actively engaged in with her, with her team, so we've made a significant amount of investments and it is embedded in this budget, but just not with specific positions. And Maria, I'm not sure if you want to add anything I may, may have missed.
No, I think, I think you've, you've talked about all the positions that we've added over the years. And we are continuing to work, we're trying to, to create a synergy between general ed and special ed, because if it can't just be special ed driving the programs, things have to happen in the general education classroom, and that's what we're looking to infuse with all of the social emotional learning and the literacy and the different programs that we're trying to, to bring forward over the next couple of years.
Thank you very much, Greg and Marie, Mr. Chair, that is all, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I do have just a couple of comments. Some of which I made on Monday when we had the budget subcommittee meeting, I just would like to commend the central office. Mr. Martino's leadership through the exceptionally difficult year in general and of course financially. To continue to kind of stay the course on our budget goals in this very difficult fiscal environment and to kind of have the, the, the vision and the professionalism to lead the organization through that despite the circumstance and all the work that I know is done by the core leadership team. Obviously, Rebecca Pellegrino is incredibly accomplished at what she does and is central to this process and, and always provides the committee with excellent data, answers all our questions, never chides away from difficult questions, follows up. Clearly makes our work a lot easier on, on the committee, so I'm very pleased to see that we're able to move forward with the free full-day kindergarten. I know that's been a very difficult
kind of, and, and arduous journey the last few years for those who have advocated for that and those who've had to work through the patchwork of, you know, the half days and whatnot. And of course, the pandemic kind of served, as, as Lauren, I think, said, you know, an accelerator of sorts on, on that front. So it's kind of a neat outcome, you know, kind of a positive thing that's, that's coming out of all this. I know a ton of work goes into this, the building leadership, all of the Central Office. And, you know, to be able to bring a budget that is so finely tuned to the town, I think it's something, you know, I'm certainly willing to stand behind and, and be proud of all the work that was done. And the last comment I have is that I think the nuance of what's going into implementing the new budget goals, which relate directly to the strategic plan for the district, really represent Mr. Martino's leadership and the vision he has for the organization as far as making sure that the budget reflects the the needs of the district and students and kind of moves in tandem with the changes in the Central Office as far as structuring a more three-dimensional and hierarchical organization that was, was much overdue and building some of that hierarchy into the instructional, the specialists under, under the leadership of Dr. Reinhold. So a lot of really great stuff going on here. Certainly incredible work during difficult times. And so it's something that I'm very pleased to support. Any other comments or questions? I don't see any hands. I actually would ask for Mr. Martino or Mrs. Frank to repeat the dollar amount. I can't. I'm having trouble accessing my copy of the slides and I didn't capture that. So it'd be much appreciated so I can reread the motion before the vote.
Okay, I can reread the amount if you would like.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, the budget dollar amount for F Y twenty-two is twenty-five million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars, which is an increase from F Y twenty-one in the amount of six hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred thirty-four or a two point four percent increase. Did I get that correct, Becky and Greg? Yay.
Two point four seven, I think.
Two point four seven. Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I thought I had a copy here in front of me. So I didn't capture it when we read the motion. I knew it was a valid motion when we started our debate. So I've got that here. And seeing no other hands or comments, the question is on the approval of the Northborough Kid Eight F Y twenty-two budget in the amount of twenty-five million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars, which is an increase from F Y twenty-one of six hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred thirty-four dollars or two point four seven. Take a roll call vote, please. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
Mrs. Tagliaferri?
Yes.
And myself, Keith the Bell. Yes, the, the motion passes unanimously and the F Y twenty-two budget is approved by the committee.
And through the chair, if I could just say a couple of words. So
Please.
I want to, again, I think you acknowledged the Central Office Leadership Team. But for me, it's, it's nice to know that I'm never the smartest person in the room and just would like to thank Stephanie, Becky, Rhoda, Heather, Keith, and Julie and Marie for their hard, hard work. They truly are a team. And, and we're very fortunate to have their leadership in our district. So just want to thank them. And then, and Becky and her financial team. She has a team of people who have done great work and acknowledge Becky's hard work.
Definitely. All right. Budget being completed, that will bring us to School Committee Member Reports. I'll just quickly go first to get out of the way. We had a Budget Subcommittee Meeting on Monday. This was a very compressed timeline for these last few steps. But that gave us an opportunity to view this budget, ask plenty of questions, go on a bit of a deep dive in certain areas. So that, that happened this past Monday. I see Mrs. Gannett has her hand up and would like to give a report. Please go ahead.
Hello, thank you. So for N S, NSPAC, they've got some upcoming events that I will share. On February ninth, which is next Tuesday at six thirty P M for part of their speaker series. It's a special education during COVID nineteen presented by the Massachusetts Advocates, Advocates for Children. On February twenty-third, also a Tuesday at ten A M, they are going the general meeting is going to be followed, they're going to have their, that's their next general meeting, followed by parents' virtual coffee, a little coffee talk. And their registration can be on their website, which is N S P A C dot org. And it can be found under the upcoming events page or on their Facebook page. And then the other thing too, which I don't know if Marie's talked about or not, but Desi is going to be conducting their three-year review in our district for compliance. It's called tired, tiered monitoring review. And this includes a survey for the special needs and an interview with the NSPAC officers and other interviews and an onsite school visit. So they are going to be part of that. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Any other reports? Mrs. Bailey Jones, please go ahead.
Thank you. Earlier, I guess in January, on the fourteenth, the Coalition for Equity met and all of our subcommittees presented on some of their work, the work that they are doing. So I just wanted to provide a couple of highlights. The Community Engagement Subcommittee talked about, you know, how we can reach out to all stakeholders in our community. And they did mention a Juneteenth celebration upcoming in the town of Northborough. The Mascot Subcommittee is planning to make a recommendation to the school committees, the combined sub, uh, school committees in June. I believe it's combined. And they're hoping in the future to educate students about the history of the Tomahawk and the Algonquin Tribe. And there's another Subcommittee on Policy and Handbooks. And so they're starting their work looking at the different policy manuals and seeing, you know, how to change wording and make it culturally relevant. And also increasing awareness for how policy really does affect students. So we talked about, you know, the, the power behind policy. And then finally, for curriculum and instruction, there's a lot of amazing ideas behind curriculum instruction and educators, basically everyone who's on that Subcommittee is looking at a lot of different ways that we can, you know, uncover unconscious bias in our classroom. You know, giving feedback on things like parent-teacher conferences. And I know that Principal Seer was talking about windows and mirrors earlier. So we did talk about, you know, having those conversations with our students and also catalog, cataloging the good things that happen in our district as well. So that is my update on the Coalition for Equity. I also sit on the Towns Committee for Diversity and Inclusion. I was not able to attend the last meeting, but we do meet tomorrow. So next month I will provide you with an update on that.
Thank you. Any other reports? Seeing none, that will bring us to Educational Policy, none at this time. Agenda item G, Policy Development and/or Distribution. We have one first read and we have several policies that are just for distribution at this point. I was not able to attend the last Policy Subcommittee Meeting, so perhaps Mr. Martino can frame the conversation for on the first read of the agenda.
Sure. So Chairman Labell and I've had many conversations over the summer and into the fall around the agenda and what would make sense in terms of the agenda and audience sharing. So this fall, I think the, the committee has piloted a few ideas. And it was through Joan Frank's recommendation, we really need to make sure this is memorialized in policy. So at the last Policy Subcommittee Meeting, we looked at Agenda and Order of Business B one eighty and really tried to pencil in some of the changes that we've piloted that have worked well and we think would actually improve the order of business at School Committee Meetings. So that is, that was the initial conversation and one of the, one of the topics we discussed was making sure that Keith, you had an opportunity to really provide your input and feedback and, because I know you were instrumentally involved in, in making some of these recommendations.
Thank you. Mrs. Frank, please go ahead.
One thing that I would like to add, I have attended the meetings, but not as a voting member. On the agenda where we have the bullets, I was seeing that in red on the one that is online, the, the linked agenda items is that in red is the things that are added. And one thing that I see is not added, and I was just going to bring it up because before the full committee tonight, was that we have added on the Northbrook Kid Eight School Committee Member Reports. And I don't see it here. So I didn't know Chairman Labell, if you wanted to add that at this time. Or, or take back to the
Is that the Subcommittee Reports that's listed?
It says Subcommittee Reports, but on our agenda, we have, we changed that to School Committee Member Reports. And the order of that is different than what we have because we have School Committee Member Reports before Educational Policy. So I would just like to bring that up and maybe you could go back to the Policy Subcommittee to take my comment and to look at that.
Yes, I had the same observation, Mrs. Frank. That's, that's a fair observation. And on the, on the latter point, actually, if, if we intend to bring this back to Subcommittee, I think we can just note the feedback and then just continue rather than, you know, using everybody's time on this meeting for going through the details. Is that the intended process at this point with this one, Mr. Martino? It looks like we're going to bring it back for a second.
Yeah. So I think hearing people's comments and feedback and then bringing it back for more work at the Policy Subcommittee makes sense.
Yeah. So well noted, Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Bailey Jones, please go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to note a couple of things that we discussed in our Policy Subcommittee Meeting that's reflected in this first read. First, having audience sharing twice, which I think all of us at the meeting agreed. It's great to have two opportunities for our audience to share based on when they're available. And then also having the principals report. It was great having a specific place tonight for our principals to give a report instead of waiting for audience sharing at the end of our meeting. So I, I see definite benefits in having those memorialized per Greg's wording. So I just wanted to give my comments on that. Thank you.
Very much. I don't know if this was discussed, so, and we can bring it to the next meeting, but my question would be about approval of bills and payrolls, which is done. It's never been done in my tenure during the meeting, the actual meeting itself. I don't know if there's a requirement to leave that on there. Of course, at this point, it's done using DocuSign. And we also, we, we've discussed as a Subcommittee in the past that we very rarely have educational policy, but I believe we have discerned that that does need to stay this way. But those would be some points to feedback. And to follow up to what Mrs. Frank said, the Subcommittee Reports, I feel like Subcommittee is too specific just because we have liaisons and we have other things happening. So the, the overall intent, if I zoom out to what the, the problem we were trying to solve was, if you will, was that it's similar to what Lauren just said about the, the principals having their spot. This is a spot for committee members so that we're not just, you know, kind of dedicated. Those are my comments. Mrs. Frank, is your hand up? Please go ahead.
Yes, according to your question on the last item that we have approval of bills and payrolls, my recommendation would be leave it there because if we do get into the situation, when we get back into our in-person meetings, many times Becky or whoever is the finance or even Keith will be bringing sometimes an emergency bill that may have to be signed. They'd be, be very timely. So, and many times if they bring them to the meetings, it prevents us from going into the district office to sign. So I think it's just there. And it also, because we as a school committee are, that's one of the directives that we have from the Ed Reform Bill of nineteen ninety-three, which is the budget. And I think that that shows us that we're doing our responsibility of approving bills and payrolls. So my recommendation would be to leave it there as a bullet item.
Yeah, interesting. My, my follow-up is just a matter of curiosity is that it seems to be always done after we adjourn. So but we can discuss for those are all, those are all fair considerations. It certainly reflects our responsibility and fairly closely reflects what we did in person. Of course, at the moment, it's harder to recognize. Any other feedback, comments? We will bring all that back to a second read on this. Seeing none, that will bring us to Distribution. We have numerous policies that have gone through, I believe it was a first and second read and approval. So they are all in our packet and linked. And they, they have all been voted by the, the entire committee. So these are for Distribution at this time. Requiring no action. Correct, Mr. Martino? So those are in the packet. Oh, comment? Yeah, go ahead, Mrs. Gannett.
I just have a question about one of them. In G three thirty, it talks about a fee for the fingerprinting. Is that fee, is that reimbursed by the district or do people, do educators and do people pay for the fee themselves? Just a curiosity I was thinking.
Fingerprinting. Greg probably knows.
That is, that is a fee that, that individual educator pays.
Themselves. It's not a reimbursement. Okay, just curious.
I just had one comment about policy too. So another topic of conversation, Mr. Labell and I had early on this year was making a space on the main district webpage for policies that are under review for an easier place for people to actually provide public comment. So Cheryl Lepery, Nancy Bissett and Gail and Haim and who is the web, website administrator are working on that and we're hoping to have a prototype to launch in the next week or so.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I, I do recall that last summer, but it was certainly tabled. The resources were under duress in many directions at that time. So appreciate the follow-up on that. Excellent. That will bring us to Personnel Items, Distribution. Agenda Item H one, there is a link packet. Is there any comment from Central Office on the Personnel Report?
I'll just make one note and that is resignations, Matt Bertnazi. So Matt Bertnazi is our Team Chairperson in Northborough. He had a leave of absence from his role as occupational therapist. So it just reflects that he will be assuming the Team Chairperson for the long term in our district, which is exciting.
Thank you. And moving along to Communications, there are none listed on the agenda at this time. Bringing us to Item J, Action on Minutes. There's just one set of minutes in the packet. This is the open meeting minutes, January sixth, the regular Kid Eight meeting. This would require a vote. Oh, Mrs. Frank, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the Northborough School Committee Open Meeting Minutes from the virtual meeting of Wednesday, January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, as presented in the link, in the linked agenda. as presented in the link, in the linked um agenda. Second, or in Tagliaferri?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Being none, the, the, the motion, uh, the, the question is on the approval of the open meeting minutes, uh, the Northbrook School Committee Virtual Meeting, Wednesday, January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, six-thirty PM, as presented in the packet. Roll call vote, please, Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
This is Bailey Jones.
Aye.
Abstained?
Correct, abstained.
Gotcha. Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
Mrs. Tagliaferri?
Yes.
And myself, Keep the Bell, yes. The motion passes with four in favor and the meeting minutes are approved. That brings us to future agenda items. There are a couple listed on the agenda. Public hearing of FY twenty-two budget has been discussed this evening. That will typically occur at the beginning of our next open meeting in March. Uh, also, it appears uh we will see a day, uh, data update on access. Is this um English language testing, right? Yes, getting nods.
Yep.
Any other comments from those present? Mrs. Bailey Jones, please.
I'm sure this will be included, um, but uh, you know, results from the survey that went out about students switching from hybrid to SARP and vice versa. So that would be helpful to know as the district continues to plan for our path forward.
Big data on changes, right, changes in learning. Anything else? All right. Approval of bills and payrolls happening by DocuSign um as needed. And that will bring us to Agenda Item M, audience sharing, second opportunity. We're down to five attendees. If anyone would like to share, please do go ahead and raise your virtual hand and you can be promoted and share. I'm off, great. Anybody? Looks like no takers there, so that would conclude the agenda and uh bring us to an opportunity to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Kelly Gannett, second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
Mrs. Tagliaferri?
Yes.
And myself, Keep the Bell, yes. Motion passes unanimously and we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Before nine o'clock.
Good night, everybody.
They will.
All right, thank you.